Okay, I think we're going to get started at 6:00 PM. My name is Megan Waters. I'm the Community Engagement Manager at the Utah Transit Authority. We want to thank you all for joining us this evening for the virtual public hearing on the proposed fare changes for 2020. For those of you who are not on the Zoom webinar, we discovered that we can only stream to one platform, so this is streaming live on our RideUTA Facebook page. And we'll be sure, once the meeting concludes, to put the recording on YouTube, so it will be accessible on all of our platforms. But I just wanted to make that note. So before we jump into the content, I want to provide just a little overview of what we're going to talk about during the next hour. We will have a presentation on the proposed changes from our Affairs Director, a questions period, and then we will conclude with the comment period. As attendees, you should all have access to a chat box and a Q&amp;A feature that should be located on the bottom of your screen. And if you have questions throughout the presentation, please feel free to jot your questions down in the chat box, and we'll address those during that portion of the meeting. If you register to leave a verbal comment during this meeting, we have your name. And so when we get to that portion of the meeting, we will just call your name in the order that we've received your registration. We'll make you a panelist, and at that point, you'll be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have two minutes to state your comments for the record. So that's a little bit about what we're going to be doing tonight. If you are watching on Facebook Live or heard about this late, feel free to jump on the Zoom anytime before the meeting ends. You can find the link here, but it's also on our rideuta.com/farechanges page, and it might be easier to access the link there. Okay, I am going to turn the time over. We also have Julie Loder on the line. She is ASL interpreting for us tonight. So find her if you're on the line and you need that. You can pin her video to the top of the screen. Thank you. Thank you, Julie. So I'm going to turn the time over to Monica Morton, our Director of Affairs, and she will provide us with the overview of fare changes. Monica, you should have access to the screen.
Great. Thank you, Megan. Hello, everybody. Thank you for attending our virtual public hearing tonight on fares. Let me advance the slide here. At UTA, we are adopting guiding principles in our proposed fare policy that will direct future strategy and decisions. I'd like to share them with you here. Simple and easy. The fare structure is simple and easy for riders to understand. Convenient. Fare payment maximizes the convenience of paying fares. Seamless. Fare payment facilitates seamless travel between all transportation modes. Flexible. Anticipates and implements innovative, cost-effective technology. Equitable. Eliminates barriers that limit access to transportation for disadvantaged rider groups. Efficient. Focuses on improved operational efficiency. And the last one, sustainable. Supports long-term financial planning and sustainable transit services. So I hope that these guiding principles will help through our discussion today as we talk a little bit more about the changes. Next, I want to share some of our goals with you. One goal is to simplify and streamline the overall fare structure. The next one is to apply consistent multipliers to the base fare, and this is so that we can simplify how the pricing of other public fares and passes are determined. Right now, it's pretty complicated. We're also looking to streamline the public fare structure by creating a single fare for all premium bus services. We're looking to change the current discount structure to align it with other discount levels. And one of our last goals is to eliminate some fare products for simplification. So let's look at some of the proposed changes, and I want to start tonight with fare rate multipliers. And we decided to simplify how the pricing of other public fares and passes are calculated, that we would use fare rate multipliers. The way this can be accomplished is, and if you look in this table, the first row, I'll start with the day pass. We'll have a multiplier of two times. The regular monthly pass will be a fare multiplier of 34, and the premium bus rate will be a multiplier of 2, and the premium monthly pass will also be a monthly multiplier of 34. So I'd like to show you a little bit how each of these multipliers work. First is the base fare rate, and that is the amount that is charged for the basic adult one-way fare. That is $2.50, and we are not proposing tonight a change here. The regular monthly pass price would change to $85 using a multiplier of 34, and the day pass would drop to $5 using a multiplier of 2. Looking at premium bus fare pricing, the proposed fare for express bus, ski, and Park City Express would be consistently priced at two times the base fare. So the rates here will be $5. The premium monthly pass price would change to $170 using a multiplier of 34. Now, I'd like to share a little bit with you about the changes we have to discounts. So our goal with this proposed change is to align our discounts. Currently, we have a lot of discount levels. We have 10%, 20%, 25%, 40%, and 50%, five different levels. The proposed fare changes will move us down to 2, and all of these steps bring us closer towards simplifying and streamline. And this can be accomplished by looking at the first line at the top, changing the 25% youth and Horizon to 50%. The fare pay discount would change from two separate discounts into one discount of 20%. Now, I would like to speak a little bit about fare products and media. We are proposing the elimination of fare products and media that you can see in this table here. So I'll go through each one of them in the column "Eliminate." First, we'll start with the premium monthly pass upgrade. And this pass, we rarely sell any of these passes. It was intended years ago for EcoPass program, and now our EcoPass program is on premium passes. So a monthly replacement to this is, rather than buying a regular pass, if that's what you've purchased, then the monthly premium pass will do the same thing. We'll also be proposing eliminating tokens. This would include the 10-pack and the 50-pack. And in place of that, other options are available to purchase. That would include the monthly pass, the fare pay card. Individuals can pay cash. We also have a mobile app, and there's a one-way ticket. So there's a lot of options that riders can pay their fare instead of tokens. We also have a Park City 30-day pass. Our sales volume on that pass is extremely low as well. And an alternative to that, if you do ride the Park City service, would be to purchase a fare pay card, or you could also pay cash each time that you board. We would have the Flex Route Deviations Punch Pass, and that is a punch pass. Right now, it's a 10-punch pass that allows you to deviate on certain routes. And riders going forward will still be able to pay cash to deviate. Monthly passes sold on TVMs, an alternative to the monthly passes sold on TVMs, since we will be eliminating those off of TVMs, will be monthly passes that you can purchase at the customer service outlets. And we also have opportunities to purchase monthly passes online or through our mobile app. And if you haven't been using the mobile app, that's a great alternative. So let's look at these changes now side by side. If we're comparing the current fare to the fare that will be effective November 1st, you can see this table here that we've created. The red indicates an increase. The green indicates a decrease. And then we've also identified, next to this schedule, which of the fare products we're eliminating. If we continue here, you can see, as it relates to our premium express bus service, the changes that we'll be making. There are several decreases in fare pricing here. And then the last page talking about some changes to fare pay specifically and ski. Let's go over a few questions that were getting asked and discuss those. The first question that we are getting asked a lot is, why is the price of the adult monthly bus pass going up? And the current multiplier on the bus pass right now is 33.5, and if you multiply that by 250, and by increasing it to 34, this brings us to $85, and I'll explain in another slide the change of the 33.5 to 34. Why is the price of the day pass going down? And this is a great question, but currently, the only round-trip product is on tracks. And we want to simplify fare payment, especially for customers that use transit all day. So what we are proposing is to eliminate the round-trip on tracks and to reduce the price of the day pass to match the round-trip. This also aligns with our use of multipliers. Currently, the day pass is 2.5, and we are proposing to bring it down to 2. And the last question on this slide, why is the fare pay discount going down? And as I mentioned earlier, because we have so many different discount levels, 10%, 20%, 25%, 40%, and 50%, the proposed changes will move us down to two levels, and all of these steps bring us closer towards simplifying and streamlining fares, and we're looking at other discount options that we can offer in the future for our low-income population. Let's go to the next slide here and talk about the 30... Sorry. Okay. So explaining a little bit better, we have questions that are being asked on the 34 multiplier, and how do we come up with that, and what is it? So I'll speak a little bit about that. If the pass cost is $85, which is what we're proposing, and this is divided by 250, then a customer would need to take 34 trips to break even on the price that they paid for that pass. And as I mentioned before, the current multiplier, it's 33.5. So the reason we're proposing the change is because we've looked at data, and it shows that customers using a monthly pass take it about five to six days a week. So if we translate that into trips, it's between 40 to 48 trips per month. And our goal with monthly passes is to provide an incentive for those customers frequently using transit, and we'll do this by offering a discount between 15% to 30%. So a multiplier of 34 keeps the price within the discount range that we've established between 15% and 30%. The second question on this slide, will the discounts for youth and Horizon cardholders be applied across all fare types? So the question here is, the youth discount will apply to the one-way fares as well as the monthly pass, but the Horizon discount, that will only apply to the regular monthly pass. So we're not making changes to the Horizon discount right now, aside from bumping it to 50%, but the youth discount will be allowing the one-way fare as well as both monthly passes. And the last question on this slide that we would like to address is, what are the discount or free fare options for children? And we're not making any changes. Children will still ride free if they're five years and younger. And one more question, one more slide worth of questions. Is ski bus included in the monthly pass? So right now, the paper pass, ski bus is included. However, in our ECO program, if you have a pass from your employer or an educational institution, ski is not included. So yes, ski is included in our premium monthly paper passes. Next one, will there be changes to the Hive Pass? And we're still working with the city to determine if there will be changes to the Hive Pass pricing. I don't have final word on that yet, but we will communicate that out when we hear from them. Tokens. What if I have tokens that I have not used? And we do understand that there are a lot of tokens out in the system. There's been several people that have purchased them, and they are being used. Tokens as of November 1st will no longer be sold. So after November 1st, you will no longer be able to purchase them. However, we will still be accepting them through August Change Day of 2020. And in addition to using them up until August 2020, we will accept them for credit towards another fare medium, like, for example, a fare pay or a day pass. And we'll do refunds with proof of purchase only, and we will have no expiration on the exchange if you're exchanging them for other fare media. So that is how...
Just a second, really quick. Sorry, Monica. August Change Day 2021 is the...
Oh my gosh, what did I just say?
You're good. All the years blur together.
Thanks, Megan. So actually, we do have one more, one more slide of questions. So let me advance forward one more slide. And that is questions about different things that might be changing in our fare system, and those include things like, is front-runner changing? No, front-runner fare is not changing. Is paratransit fare changing? We're not changing that or suggesting changes. Will the senior rate be changing? No proposed changes to that rate. And will this affect the group pass? The group pass pricing is going to stay the same. So those are some of the common questions that we've been asked. I hope by going through them, it helps clarify some of the changes that we're proposing. And at this point, Megan, I will toss it back to you.
Thanks, Monica. We want to give an opportunity for anyone on the call tonight to ask a question. If you want to raise your hand, Sam can unmute you, and you can verbalize your question. Or we also, again, we have the chat feature and the question and answer box. So if you prefer to type your question in one of those, feel free to do so.
Okay, so I'm going to allow, I'm going to promote Fred Elliott to the panel so that he can ask his question.
Okay, great.
He should be on now. Fred, go ahead and let us know what your question is.
Megan, can you hear me? Hello?
You're very quiet. Can you speak louder?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Can you hear Sam? You were nodding your head.
Yeah, I think I can hear you. Go ahead.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Hello?
We can hear you. Go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, my question is, why can't you just go to a cashless system for your routes? I noticed that most of the riders have a fare pay card, and they, I would say 95% of people don't use cash. And so, and those who do use cash, they, it's an inconvenience.
Fred, thank you. This is Monica, the Affairs Director. I'm happy to answer that for you. So we have been exploring the possibility of going cashless and ways that we could go cashless, but we do have a group that is using cash, and that's our only way to pay. And so we're making sure that we still have a way to accommodate them. It's important to us to make sure that the markets that are riding have a way to pay their fare. And so we'll still continue to accept that for now, but we are definitely looking at ways that we could minimize cash in our system. Thank you for that feedback of what you observed.
I have one more question, okay? My other question is, why are you guys proposing fare increase right now when UTA is just coming back from COVID and going to 93% of service when we don't even have the ridership yet?
Thank you. So the question is, why are we doing this now, right? And it's something that we've been looking at and talking about for a long time. And unfortunately, COVID has put a wrench into several things. But we felt, as an organization, that a lot of these changes are important, especially increasing some of these discounts and making the day pass available at a reduced rate. And so as we look at it, the benefits actually outweighed the timing. And so we're going to go ahead and push forward with November. We're already in a challenging time. And so because we're interested in making these changes, and we've been focused on it since the beginning of the year, we've decided no longer to put them off. Thank you for your question.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate that. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you, Fred. We have one more raised hand. I'm going to allow Jiwan to talk, or to promote him to a panelist, so...
And just a reminder, this portion is for questions about the proposed changes, and then we'll have an opportunity for people to state their comment for the record. So just to make that clarification.
Thanks, Megan. Okay.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Hey, thank you for that, all the explanation on different kind of fare. But you guys explained all different kinds of fare, but I didn't see the fare for para-transit on the website. So I'm glad in this presentation material, you briefly mentioned it. But for public awareness, I would like to ask you to disclose all the fare system of para-transit. Often case, a lot of other public people believe para-transit fare is free or lower than regular bus. But as you know, para-transit, their fee, bus fare is $4 for one trip. There is no transit offered. You know, regular bus, they offer the transit, so they can use it within two hours or two-plus hours. But they don't, para-transit don't have one. Also, para-transit do not have discounted monthly packs. So I would like to let the public know, so everybody be aware of it. So hopefully, the next time, when you discuss about this kind of public hearing, please do not exclude para-transit. Just so you know, include para-transit, and then let the public know. Thank you. That was my comment.
Monica, do you want to speak to that at all, just that paratransit is changing?
Yeah, so there are no changes to para-transit, but what I heard you say is that when we do talk about fares, it's important to keep para-transit first and foremost in our discussions and helping people understand what is the fare, what's it about, to clarify some misconceptions out there. And thank you, we will definitely try to do a better job of that. But as of right now, we're not making any changes to para-transit fares, which is probably why you didn't hear much about them during this presentation. But thank you for your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. There are no more raised hands. Do any of our other attendees have anything that they would like to ask? You can raise your hand if there's a... We do have a comment that I can read, if that works.
Or Sam, why don't we ask if you'd like to unmute himself during the comment period, and he can share that comment?
Okay. Yeah, Mike, thank you for your questions. Would you like to... Well, are we moving on to the comment period?
Sure, yeah. If there are no more questions, feel free to jot questions if they come up for you in the chat or raise your hand, and we can always circle back to questions, but we can start the comments. So if Mike would like to verbalize his comment, we can go ahead and unmute him.
Mike, I'm going to promote you to a panelist so that you can verbalize that question.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. Well, I was going to just read what I had just typed, but it disappeared when I switched to a panelist, so...
You should be able to see it if you open the Q&amp;A box.
Nope, it clears everything out.
Oh, it cleared it? Oh, no.
When you switch, yeah.
I can read it if you'd like.
I think I can do it from memory, but I'm someone who, well, first off, I'm happy with the changes that are being made. I'm also someone who travels around the country a lot, and I can use transit all around the country, so I see what their fare systems are like. And I feel like there is indeed for a three-day pass and a seven-day pass also, because there is a big gap between a day pass and a 30-day pass. And I feel like there's a market there to be taken advantage of. And also, as I go around the country, I see that monthly calendar month passes are rare now. Pretty much all transit agencies have switched to 30-day passes in order to give riders more flexibility, because not everyone's needs fit within a calendar month. And also, we've been using our electronic fare system for over 10 years now. And I have to say that I'm disappointed that UTA is not really taking full advantage of the infrastructure that exists. And they really need to be looking at things being offered by other electronic fare systems around the country. And also, I would really like UTA to look into doing more innovative and flexible things like the HOP pass in Portland, which it automatically, if you spend more than a day's worth of fare, it turns into a day pass. If you continue to use it, it automatically turns into a monthly pass. So it's extremely flexible and equitable, especially for those that may not have the means to buy a full monthly pass upfront. So I think that covers everything that I said in the Q&amp;A. Thank you.
I think it did too. Thank you for your comment. Okay, okay. Sam, is there a George Zinn on the line? He registered and indicated that he liked to leave a comment. Do you see a George Zinn?
I do not. There is a call-in user with no name that might be that person.
Let's go through this list first. Do you see a Nathan Ralkin?
No.
Okay. Carol Mernan?
No.
Jiwan?
Yes, Jiwan spoke with us earlier.
Great. So go ahead and make Jiwan a panelist. If Jiwan, if you wanted to add a comment for the record, I know you asked a question on the para-transit topic, but if there was a comment you wanted to make for the public involvement record, this is a great time to do that.
Jiwan, I promoted you to a panelist. If you... Jiwan, I promoted you to a panelist if you'd like to make a comment.
About the para-transit bus? I momentarily lost some connection. What do you want me to say?
So on your registration, you said that you would like to make a comment for the record on the, on the fare change proposal. Was there anything additional that you wanted to add? Just support or any concerns that you had with the proposal that you wanted us to include in the formal record?
No, you know, I personally believe para-transit bus fare structure is a little unfair. But I don't want to talk about that at this moment because that is not a subject of this hearing. But at this point, I would like to ask UTA always, you know, include and disclose the para-transit fare. So people can understand about para-transit service and what other disability, other people with a disability have to pay. So for disabled people, just only to go to work, you know, five days a week, they spend $160, which is a lot more than other able-bodied passenger on using other regular buses. So hopefully, other public can understand this situation.
Thank you very much. We've got your comment for the record. Thanks very much for joining.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one other raised hand.
Go ahead.
We have one other raised hand. I'm going to promote Fred to a panelist so he can make the comments. Fred, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I would like to make a comment for the record. And my comment is, I, I think right now for the, for the November change day, I think you guys are moving too fast. I think you guys need to wait maybe till next August change day for ridership to move up. Because to see where we're going to be with the COVID, you're, you're about to start a 93% what's the word? Service increase. And I think you should see what's going to happen there before you, you do this fare increase. That way, we can entice passengers to come back to the service and to ride it and see what it's like again. And so we can get the passengers' trust again before we move on to a fare increase. That way, when we have the passengers and we have the, the ridership, then we should do this as well. And that's my thoughts on the whole thing.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you for having me. I do appreciate it.
Thank you for joining us. Sam, is there Cristobal Viegas on the line?
No.
Okay, if there is anyone else that would like to make a comment for the record, please feel free to raise your hand. But we are going to just close this meeting. We'll be on the line until 7:00 PM. If you are watching from somewhere else or getting on a little bit late and you want to make a comment for the record, we'll be here until 7:00. There are some other, other ways for you to make comment as well. On the screen, we have this, we have multiple ways for you to submit a comment. And more information can be found on our website at rideuta.com/farechanges. But we'll stay on if anyone has any more questions or comments. There anything else coming through Sam for you?
I've been watching the Facebook live stream. There has been, and this isn't directly related to the fare changes, the proposed changes. But there has been some questions from those on Facebook just about drivers asking for fare during the pandemic. And I was wondering if one of our panelists would be willing to just kind of clarify the policy that we have about that, just to clear it up.
Yes, I can clarify that. Hi, this is Monica again. And COVID-19 has definitely been interesting as far as fares being collected. And one of the things that we've done is tried to minimize the amount of contact that our operators have had to come in with things like cash and transfers and paper passes. So what we've done temporarily is ask the drivers to use their best judgment. And I think what customers are seeing are differences between drivers that, and operators that might be still enforcing and operators that might not feel comfortable enforcing to the extent that either we've asked them to under limited parameters or at all. And so I think that's been a challenge is we have given some leniency. But because of that leniency, what we've seen is a vast difference in the way operations have been handled. So what we're doing is putting some glass panel, or not glass, but fiberglass panels in where the drivers sit. And we're trying to get all of those installed by August change day. And once those are installed, then we will resume and plan to resume right now our regular fare collection policy and practices. But right now, we have suspended them temporarily. And that's only in regards to operators touching fare. But there is still, what we're recommending, there's a fare pay card. So you can load funds with fare pay so that you don't have to pay with cash. We're looking for you to maybe just flash your monthly pass or if you have something that needs to be punched. So that's the best I can offer is that it's really right now, nothing that we're being consistent with. And the reason why is because we want our operators to feel safe. We want our customers to feel safe. And they're doing that right now within their, the boundaries that they've set for themselves. Would anybody else on the panel like to add to that?
That was great Monica. Thank you so much. I would just also like to add, there's been some, just some comments on Facebook, just comments about different things that are going on at UTA. For anyone that's watching on Facebook still, you can make a comment about the Fares changes through the venues that we have listed here. Any other comments or concerns that you have, it's best to go through customer service. So you can call our customer service number anytime and comment on, you know, some of the concerns or questions that you have. And we can help you find those answers. So thank you for participating.
Megan, I sent you a chat.
Oh yeah, which slide was that? We can go back really quick.
It was two or three slides back. It was the last one that talked about. And I realized I failed to address it. Go forward. One more, one more. Nope, sorry. Go the other way. No. Yeah, this one. I didn't realize that slide snuck in. And so I can address that now while we're waiting to see if there are any other comments come through. So the question is, why are passes still? Why are, why are the passes still monthly rather than 30-day? Because 30-day is more flexible. And why are there no three-day and no seven-day passes? So part of the simplification effort is, is to scale back what we offer. And oftentimes, when we put a product out there, we won't have very many sales of it. Or it just won't be a high-performing product. So it takes more effort to administer it than it does with the revenue that we get off of it. But I would like to say that we are in the process right now of updating our electronic fare collection readers. And so as Mike mentioned earlier, they're 10 years old. And we will be getting new equipment, which will be very exciting. It will have additional capabilities. So it's long overdue that we update this equipment. But we are looking at ways to use this technology better. And I've been in my role for two years. And we, this was a new role created by UTA to focus specifically on fares. And so that's what we've been doing the past couple of years. They're very complicated. And so having to go through the simplification process is like remodeling your house. There's just so many different components. And so we're taking them step at a time. But I think you will find as we simplify fares, as we implement new technology, that there will be better options available. There will be instances where we're exploring, will fare capping work? And will a 30-day pass work? So even though our fare system is complicated now, we haven't done the best job at taking advantage of technology. You'll see that change because we have a good, solid board and executive director and a good team that is working on these requests and comments that we're getting and improving. So I think when we're done with the fares remodel, if that ever happens, you'll see some changes and that will include some additional options that will make your fare pay experience a little bit better.
Thanks Monica. I'll just go back to the end slide. Sam's going to keep her eye on Facebook and, and the chat box. And if anyone has their hands raised, but seeing nothing. Just make sure if you're listening today and you didn't speak up to make a comment on the Zoom, please go to one of these methods and feel free to submit a comment for the official record. We really appreciate hearing from you. Okay, seeing nothing, I'm going to say that every, everyone who's on the call can feel free to conclude their time here. We'll just stay on, Sam and I will stay on and make sure we're monitoring. If anyone has any last minute comments, we'll be sure to make them part of the public involvement record. So thank you everyone for joining us today. Our contact information, you can reach us here at hearingofficer@rideuta.com. And you can find us through our website. So please don't hesitate to reach out if there are additional questions or concerns that you have about the fare changes proposal. Have a great night.
You too. Good night.